Jacob.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen. Eric. Johnson. Here. For the full minutes?
Move their proof.
Jacob.
Yes.
Lund. Watts.
Same.
Allen. Johnson. Yes. Adoption of the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda. I'd like to move item number 10, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda, to put it immediately after this before number six public hearings.
Jacob.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnson. Yes. Okay. Is there any one that's around? We just want to give you a way to. How do you feel about? Okay, so I know we have a couple different ones here. First is Ms. Caldwell. If you just might step up to the podium so everybody can hear you.
I just had a question about the community parking lot. We need a guy at work, we both use it, and went there this morning. I don't know whose responsibility it is to clean it, clear it out, but nothing was ever filed, couldn't get into it, and also the entranceway to it for the last month has been extremely rough, getting in and out of it, so I just kind of have no idea what the responsibility was to.
Is that the one where I said K Hill?
Yes.
That community parking lot is owned by MoDOT. If you're talking about the one on Highway 15, not K Hill, that's a MoDOT. That's a MoDOT. They would be responsible for the maintenance and things like that, just the same as they clean Highway 15 with their files.
So is there any, like, just contact MoDOT to?
My guess would be is to contact Rich Shipley, who is our district engineer. You call me tomorrow at my office, I will get you a contact information from Mr. Shipley.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, next we have Jeff Mitchell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the chairman of the governmental affairs for the Missouri cannabis business associations. We represent many of the applicants around the state of Missouri. We're very involved in the legislation. I've had multiple meetings with the director of the Department of Health regarding policy, and we've been around speaking to a lot of local governments about the implementation. And I noticed that you have an ordinance on secondary today, so I would have come earlier if I kept up, but it's just been crazy since the past. But I guess my only observation in looking at the map that's been placed in the back, I was just a little bit surprised, I guess, to see that there was a sensitivity to locations close to liquor stores or facilities or where drinks are served. And I was curious, a little curious, I've talked to a lot of cities and the Missouri Municipal League Council, I just hadn't heard that before, and I was wondering with respect to a medical law that the constitution put forward with doctors and patients, I'd seen more of the approach where the regulations are all related to sort of an approach of pharmacies, and I'd never heard where the, you know, sort of the serving of alcohol would affect somehow people stopping by and getting their medicine at a dispensary. So I was sort of interested in what the thought process was on that. I also noticed that you had stuck with the thousand-foot distance limitation, and I guess I can't speak too much, you know, about that, that's obviously in the law and judgment of the local government to decide what's in the best interest of the city, so I would agree with that, but I was curious about what, since I've just never heard more about the liquor sensitivity on medical marijuana ordinance.
I believe the thousand feet is the easy one to answer, right, state law?
I'm going to save my comments for when we do it, but I'll need that as an ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to mention those items.
Thank you. And then Jerry Franklin.
Thank you, man, mayor and council. Hope you like my shirt. I have some of the same concerns that Jack Mitchell has, and I would offer that, in my view, as an attorney, but the law has already given the public some protection by making this by prescription only. Secondly, I would point out there's some sales tax opportunities there for the city, there's some new job opportunities for the city, and if we choose not to pass it in a form that can really be usable, meaning not too many restrictions on distance, then people will buy their product in Sedalia or the next community. I do want to disclose that I have a vested interest, the people that are interested in medical marijuana are prepared to buy two real estate properties that I'm involved in, so I'm going to make that disclosure, but I don't think it's impacted how I feel about this issue, and I'm cautious to be too assured it could really have the end result that no one opens up here, and if that's your goal, you'll be successful, but let's look at ways that we can invite new business to town within the law and legislate accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have a public hearing on a request for a CUP at 1095 South Mitchell Street. Public hearing on ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use. 8.100 in a LI light industrial district located at 1095 South Mitchell Street in the city of Warren, Missouri. We will open the hearing.
There are three comments, I do know the applicants are here in City of Mitchell Street. This is a strip wall that is located on South Mitchell Street that's been there for quite some time, and it is located in a light industrial district. It's a strip wall that over the years has had some daycare and hair salon types of uses in it, and currently the hair salon is still there, the area that was used as daycare, they would like to use it as a rental event center for small events such as bridal showers for baby showers and type of like immune type of things, but it will, because it does have a kitchen, it does fall into the land use category in the zoning ordinance of a restaurant, and so a restaurant in a light industrial district does require a conditional use permit, and looking at whether or not, how they want to use the building meets the zoning requirements, there are two points on which it does not. Primarily, they've asked for 1,800 square feet to be used for the rental event center, and the parking on the site currently would only allow 1,360 square feet of that for a rental event center in order to meet parking requirements, so they would either need to increase the number of parking spaces by adding on to the parking lot, or reduce the center, the event center, down to the 1,360 square feet. The other issues with the building are created by setbacks that have changed since the time it was built and the zoning ordinance that was adopted in 1992, and so those are non-performing situations that would deter of any use that would go into the building, and so there is some additional language in your ordinance where you can allow that to continue with the conditional use permit if that is your desire, so if you've looked at the ordinance, it seems a little longer than normal, that's why. Be happy to answer any questions, and I know, again, the applicants here to speak.
Other questions? Applicants Chris Meyer.
Chris Meyer and JJ.
Yeah.
I think they're both here.
Yes, ma'am.
Chris, would you like to speak?
Oh, I can. Nobody's going to argue against me on this point about being for it, but we're going to, you know, well, she described it pretty well, what we're looking at doing there, and, you know, that building's been there for 30-plus years at this point, you know, I mean, we can change, we wanted to add on to it at one point and maintain it as a daycare, but being as the setback rules have changed, we couldn't add on to the building, we're looking for something we can do with this building to, you know, make it a, you know, a ten coniferated building, because right now it's just sitting there, maybe you can't, it doesn't have enough square footage anymore, the state's kind of regulating it out of the daycare game, so we can't do that with it, and we're just trying to, you know, kind of find some kind of use that we can put this building to where, you know, it can actually generate some kind of income. I don't know if this is the answer or not, but it's a better one than sitting here, so we're going to give it a shot, see how it goes. There's other things that I'm, you know, looking at, I don't know, this is probably not the place to address them, but, you know, thanks to the fire department trying to make it do, like, you know, commercial grade stoves and fire extinguishing hood and all this, and, I mean, right now it's basically just got residential stove sitting in there, the same stove that was in there when it was a daycare, and it was one where I parked another bunch of kids, state said it was fine, so I don't know why everybody else has that problem, but I'm worried, I'm more worried about getting some fancy commercial grade stove in there that nobody really knows how to use, I mean, I think it'd be more likely to burn the place down with that, the forest, the parking goes, you know, we just kind of, I just thought just go back and forth with the park and all that, see, you know, see what we got to work on, to make that happen, you know, we have been in huge issues, that's basically all I've got.
Chris, if it was passed the way it reads, because is everything else okay other than your parking, which you may be able to do, and then the stove, is there something else in there?
Yeah, they think I was putting a two-hour firewall now, because of, because of the notices, this is what Brett Dembro told me anyway, we want to put a two-hour firewall, it's got a one-hour firewall, and we should be clear, and please go ahead just a second, but what he's talking about now are building and fire code-related issues that have nothing to do with your zoning CUP, which is the action item before the council.
Okay.
So while you may have information or discuss this, the council is not being asked to take any action, and in fact would not be able to take action to waive code requirements.
So the way it would be passed possibly denied?
That just deals with zoning issues.
All right, Chris.
I didn't, I figured it's not the right place to address that.
Okay.
I had a chance to talk, don't talk, I didn't have the resources.
Thank you. Okay, we will close the public hearing now for that one, and we will open a public hearing on an ordinance enlarging an R3 low-density multifamily residence district by rezoning land located at 615 Lakeview Drive from GB, General Business District, to R3 low-density multifamily residence district.
This property at 615 Lakeview Drive is south of the veterinary clinic that we were working with earlier last year on the, they did a variance request as well as they came to this body to talk about for good and bad, so you're on that side street, they're coming south of Young Street, and this is a single-family house that has been there for many, many years, and the owner would like to sell it, but is having a difficult time with buyers being able to get financing for it because it's located in a general business district. So that set of circumstances is very similar to the one that you had last summer on Gay Street, except for when we discussed it on Gay Street, that was a VA loan that was having trouble, and this is not, this is conditional financing, this is not a VA loan, and they're still having this difficulty. So because it's on the edge of the zoning district, the general business district, and it's adjacent to two different residential districts, the one to the south being the R3 district, they have requested a rezoning because it is adjacent and that would cure their loan issue. Staff has recommended in favor of the rezoning, look at that area, it being general business and such a distance from Young Street, down the street, because of the grade change and elevation changes, it's not visible from Young Street, so it's not likely to be redeveloped in the future for commercial uses, and it is a small lot at 7,000 square feet, so it does allow a single family in the residential district, it's not going to be large enough at any point unless they did some type of lot combinations and replay for any type of duplex or multifamily construction. So staff has recommended approval. We did have some public comment that's noted in your staff report, one gentleman in particular spoke against it, he was opposed to additional apartments in the area, and I think the board last week was interested to describe him, but that's not what he requested, so it was just keep the single-family house that's there, the change, the zoning district that's in. And I believe the applicants are here on this little floor.
We did not have anybody sign up for that. We will close that public hearing. Next, we have a second reading of an ordinance regarding marijuana-related uses, an ordinance amending chapter 27 of the Code of City Ordinances of the City of Kansas City, Missouri, regarding marijuana-related uses.
This is a report, this is a second reading of an ordinance that you had a public hearing and a first reading on in December, and at that time, there were requests for several additional maps, and we have provided those. December, and I can't pinpoint which one that, so that the people in the audience can see the same information that you have. So when we started mapping the original ordinance, which was what was on the document in December. So the way GIS works is they demap a point, and then you tell it to make a buffer around that point, and so that's why I'm using the word buffer. The ordinance allows these uses by right, all except for cultivation facilities with outdoor cultivation, that one was the only one by conditional use permit, everything else was by right, allow these in the red, general business zoning district, purple, the central business district, the white, which is, I'm trying to, your light industrial here and here, that's really a white overlaid on an arrow, your white light industrial districts, light blue, which is business office, and you have a very, very tiny amount of that at the Mitchell and Gay Street intersection, Donna Albert's accounting office, that's a business office area, no, sorry, business office is what was Dr. Vera Bliss's office behind Red Cross Pharmacy, that was, I'm busted, that was business office, Donna, and that's the light blue, and pink is your neighborhood business, and that is at the Gay and Mitchell Street intersection, so the maps to us here, we really aren't ever going to be able to see those light blue or light pink areas, but you can see, and the gray is your heavy industrial district, and there's just a tiny bit of that just west of the downtown area. So mostly, when you look at this, look at your light industrial white, your red, and your purple, and on the original, when you just buffer the parks, because we don't have points to match for the schools, we don't have that for the schools and churches, but we did have our parks as a layer already, you see the parks with the thousand foot buffer around, and those red, purple, and white areas that don't have a buffer on them is where you could build. Then we look at the next separation requirement, which was the 500 feet of a residential rezoned district, and the plain red, plain purple, and plain white got much smaller. When we layer in the buffer front, and this is just packaged sales of liquor, those are the 500 foot around each license holder, you can see those circles and how that eats into those colors, there it is for liquor by the drink, and when you put them all together, there's not much left. So with that information, staff has brought forward then the segment of revised ordinance. The only sections that change within that ordinance, and they're dated on the bottom, so when I'm saying revised, I'm talking about the one that has the date of 1/14/19 in the document, the only section that changed is section five of the ordinance, but would become section 27-246A, location restrictions once it's confined. So we separated out all the different types of buffers here, and then changed the distances on several of those, and there's a table in your staff report that highlights that, but we can see it as well with the map, so here's your new set of maps, again, you have the, we don't have the ability to buffer the thousand foot, that all stayed the same, but your residential and your parks went into their own bullets, and we went from reduced down to 100-foot buffers, so you have, again, the same color without any buffer on it, you could build it.
It was reduced to 100-foot buffer, but the language also includes, unfortunately, the 100-foot buffer, that whole lot, therefore, what we're saying there is we want some sort of buffer between the sales and these facilities, and so around there's something in between, whether it's a business or a residence or whatever else, that would create a sufficient amount of buffer, so basically that lot immediately adjoining any park would be ineligible for sale, so we don't have dispensing of this product right next to our parks. To answer the original question that came earlier regarding, and I think this kind of ties back into his question earlier about why buffer it from liquor sales, staff is looking at this from a longer-term picture than just medical marijuana, if you follow the trajectory of these types of processes throughout the country, these marijuana laws have changed, starting with first medical marijuana, then transitions into recreational use, and as the city attorney mentioned at the last meeting, once these uses are in place, they're grandfathered, so your ability as a council or as a community to change those restrictions later are going to be extremely difficult because these will be grandfathered in, and it's likely to argue that if they're licensed to do medical marijuana sales in the future, should recreational marijuana ever be viable in Missouri, they're permitted to do medical marijuana, but by also be permitted to do recreational marijuana, so those places are going to be grandfathered in, and so your ability to then restrict to a greater degree, such as away from alcohol establishments or from parks and those types of things, are going to be greatly restricted at that point. So staff has taken the long-term game, assuming that at some point in the future, Missouri's probably going to approve recreational marijuana, I would try to put you in the best position as a community going forward, that you aren't mixing uses that you don't want mixed in the future. So that answers the question regarding why the buffer from liquor sales as well as parks and those types of things, but I just wanted to clarify here, it isn't just a 100-foot buffer, any lot that has a portion, probably flagged, that portion of that lot falls within the 100-foot buffer, that entire lot is therefore not eligible for dispensary of recreational marijuana.
And that is in your, that's that bullet seven, the end of all the other distance requirements tells you. That's it there. So on this one, we went from 1,000 foot from a public park down to 100 foot, and we went from 500 on a residential district down to 100 foot with the language that if any portion of the lot is within 100 foot, then the whole lot is out.
That only, that only applies to this, to parks.
To parks.
Parks that are residential.
So the liquor piece of it, if a piece of that lot falls into that place, there's still, correct, okay.
Right. That language about a portion of the lot being the whole lot is only in number two, where it's residentially zone and public park.
Correct. I thought that's what it said, I'm sure we're clear.
Okay. On this next map then, this is, we've gone from 500 feet down to 200 feet on packaged sales, same on this one, down from 500 feet to 250 feet on liquor by the drink. When we, there was some discussion in December about only doing it for liquor by the drink and not for packaged sales, so this map is that scenario, it has both buffers from both your residential zone district, your public park, and your liquor by the drink, all showing on this map, and so on this map with anything then that's red, purple, like blue, light, pink, gray, or white, with no buffer on it, you would have the option of doing marijuana-related use. Again, you do have that portion of any, any portion of the lot, the whole lot, that we can't match, so you can't exceed that. This one is all of them, this is the residential zone, the public parks, packaged sales, and liquor by the drink, everything, and what doesn't have a buffer on it, they should be spelled. So the draft of the ordinance that stated 1092 is written with all of the buffers that are on this map right now showing in the ordinance, so it includes all those different scenarios, and if you were to pass it in this form, it would need to be amended from the December version to this version, and then if you wanted to change it even further from what you have this evening, what's written by deleting or adding something, you would make a motion to do that, and then I think make a motion for the whole ordinance. Doug may have to help you do that, and just say what you wanted to.
Ultimately, I think, what you want the ordinance to say.
Yeah.
Help you determine that process and that.
Yes.
I know I definitely struggled to read the map, because there were so many colors in there, it was definitely, I actually tried to bring up a Google map, and they transferred the dots, or they just took the wheel. So what I wanted to see was how, how does that affect, did that change theirs, how that affect the strip malls and stuff, because that's kind of where I can visualize these guys want to be.
Well, again, staff kind of took the mantra, this was approved by a super majority of our public within our building precincts, and so we have not tried to overly restrict, and as we went through and put those buffers on, as we proposed in the original agreement, we determined that staff, that it was probably more restrictive than we intended it to be. So we really tried to, you know, council has no options here, and ultimately deciding on behalf of the community, how is it going to be present in our community, and, you know, this is a staff recommendation, you don't have to provide any buffers from parks, you don't have to provide any buffers from alcohol establishments if you don't want to, you can open it up fully, free and clear, if that's what you choose to do, and I believe even the state law with regards to the churches and those types of things, that only goes into effect if the council or the local community doesn't have a more restrictive guideline in place, so you could even leave that if you want. But again, commonly, based off the historical past with other issues, not necessarily medical marijuana or other, you know, that type of thing, but generally people don't want these types of uses around their churches, if you don't want around your parks, some for law enforcement reasons, you know, those types of things, public safety, those types of things, those are all the things that staff is trying to take in consideration and try to give you a professional recommendation for, and now council can tweak that as you feel appropriate for our community. Now, council can tweak that as you feel appropriate for our community. Obviously, as we stated earlier, some other communities haven't considered proximity to alcohol establishments. So they haven't adopted anything that adheres to that. I don't know what they're using to assess that. I don't know how much they're looking for the long-term future as far as preparing for recreational marijuana at some point in the future. But I can't speak for them. My job is to be here and advise you the best part, and that's what I do. So at this point, this is what staff has provided. I think reducing to the 100 feet from residential zone district or park opens up a lot more potential area for development. You see that we reduced also the 250 feet from licensed packaged sales of alcohol, as well as by the drink. I don't know that staff would be strongly opposed to just changing it to just the buffer of by the drink only. Those are all options that the council can discuss and decide upon. Now, we did try to advise you multiple maps that show you all those different scenarios. And as you talk about which one you feel is best fit for Warrensburg, we can point you to the map that most closely fits to that and advise you into processes as far as how to put that in. But at this point, staff on the direction of what is appropriate for Warrensburg.
And for me personally, I do want to see the buffers around schools and parks and stuff like that. I think that's, I think that buffer's important. As far as the liquor piece of it goes, I mean, I can understand the by-the-drink portion. I'm still struggling with the packaged portion. So I mean, that piece there, I don't really, I don't know necessarily if we need the packaged piece in there. I do understand the by-the-drink portion for as we go forward in the future. But if you go to a store and buy a six-pack, you can't, you know, you can't walk out the store and open it up and have a drink.
So I would venture to say the same, but if you are within a place and drinking by the drink, you also can't take that outside. So I think that's, I would look at that perhaps more locally and say, I don't know that I see a connection necessarily, whether at this point being medical or then in the future being recreational. I don't know that I see a connection necessarily because you're within a facility and you're breaking the law by stepping outside or maintaining the law by staying within inside the establishment.
What do we think is going to come down to Jeff City, Councilor? Have you got any idea?
Nothing. I haven't seen any of those regulations.
Do you expect those entered?
I do think some bills are going to be for to go regulation.
If anything that we would pass locally, if there were a conflict with anything that came from Jeff City, would override whatever we.
That's true. So Jeff City comes down and says 1,000 feet. We have to, I'm understanding as long as we act first.
You can't, a city, statutory city, which Warrensburg is, can neither permit what the state prohibits nor prohibit what the state prevents. So you have to look and see if there's a direct conflict between regulations. There can be a supplement to the state. So if the city were to adopt a restriction and the state was to allow or adopt a regulation that was more liberal than what the city had on the books, then that state regulation would override that. We'd have to go back and make amendments. We do that from time to time, but chapter three on alcohol is stabilized, changed over the years on alcohol. So we, in the absence, who knows what will not happen at the state regulation level. You have to make the decisions of what's appropriate as to what we know the law is right now. And as that changes at the state level, staff will, as we amend with the regulations, bring that to your attention and provide appropriate amendments to make sure that the law is there.
So just a question, am I going to open one downtown, downtown? If we pass what it is, they could open one downtown, town or church school?
So the purple area is your central business district. If you did, this map here, the purple there, would have all that we're able to map. So the purple that doesn't have a blue dot on it, that you can see the purple, those areas would be available downtown.
If you see that big group of dots right about the middle of the page, that's High Street right there. High Street's completely out of it.
I guess my question, and I think last time I did the last council was, we can have one.
Well, that's, and that's where we were at with the last one, and that's what we discovered by drawing all the circles and stuff. There wasn't really any place, so that's why we asked staff to bring us back something that was definitely different from what we had looked at before. The planning was only presented to us.
So you can have one on the purple, the red, or the white?
As long as there's not a white circle around it.
But not that, that has the buffer for churches and stuff also in it?
No, it does not have the buffers for churches or schools because we don't have those points mapped. So some of it would it is only.
So you had all options, spaces that aren't, that are showing or available right now and would not be available roughly where the churches.
Well, I have, there's like a scrub of, of the, of the, there's a, it used to be Hanjo's, but it's kind of close to Medway. Is that, that building? And when they're, they're selling liquor though, by the, by the drink.
That's Crossside Cricket?
Crossside Cricket, yeah. So there's a little building by there, but since Crossside Cricket's.
The Crossside Cricket's closed, does it even have a liquor license in that spot right now? But I think that's, that area there's got a lot of, it's got residential right behind it. So you have 100-foot buffer, which is going to grab, because Crossside Cricket bumps right up against that. So you're just going to take those lots out anyways, like based on the whole lot or dairy?
Well, the real question is, is how much you want us to interact and mix with your community building? And how much you want to interact and mix with alcohol, obviously. And it isn't so much the alcohol coming in where the marijuana is. It's the marijuana underlying where the alcohol is. I mean, you're right, the drinks are going to come out of the bar. But someone to be able to go and buy it and then go work and smoke it and go in the establishment, we have no control of that. But you're increasing the probability by allowing those to be solely nearby each other. And maybe it doesn't matter. I mean, you can, you can kick all that out if that's what you choose.
Well, I personally, I don't, I don't, I don't want it next to our residential areas. I mean, I'm good with that, I'm good with those buffers around residential areas and stuff. But I do want to see it have the ability to be in our commercial, you know, in our strip malls, in that area.
But most of your strip malls are open. The challenge, the point you're going to have challenges is if you have a restaurant that has a permit to sell our whole lot of drink. You will have some strip malls that will have a challenge with that. Not all, don't you? But at the same time, that business could close and that liquor license go away, then that restriction goes away. This will, this will change throughout our community depending on where the liquor licenses are and where the marijuana permits are pulled for. That will ebb and flow throughout the county throughout time.
So what would, so what would happen if, okay, so we have a medical marijuana location. At the time, there was no liquor by the drink sales going on around there. And one of the restaurants that had been closed opens back up and applies for a liquor license. Would they be, would they still be granted a liquor license because they're 100 feet? Or would they no longer be allowed to be granted a liquor license because there's 250 feet close to that medical marijuana?
I don't think right now your code addresses it. Right now, your code addresses that your medical marijuana cannot be within a certain proximity of alcohol. You don't have anything in your code that specifically says that alcohol cannot be within a certain limit of your.
And the difference, the difference there is that scenario, should recreational marijuana become legal, would be likely a recommendation from staff to make an alteration to chapter three. And you currently have buffers from schools and churches and facilities such as that for liquor licenses to be issued. And in the event that there were recreational marijuana sales, there would likely be a recommendation that you could add that to your buffers for people that are receiving a liquor license.
So we wind over 250 feet.
Correct. It would likely, it would likely have to mirror this, to say one, that neither one could come to the other. Right now, as it exists with medical only, they're having a liquor license. We would measure the liquor license issue based on the usage that's happening right now.
So right, right now, our current, to get a liquor license, is it 100 feet from residential and churches and stuff to get a liquor license?
Schools and churches are.
But it's fully contained in the state law. I don't think we have it in our city law at all.
In chapter three? And I think, I think there's, I think there's a exception there.
We used to, but it probably switched to just the state. Well, no, it used to be in both chapter 27 and three, and now it's only in three.
Chapter three, that's right.
So right, so our liquor laws currently have 100-foot buffer from churches and schools.
But the direct answer to your earlier question was that, yes, if there were no liquor licenses, one could, a liquor license could come in at this point. But that's based on the fact that there's not current recreational sales allowed. Should that become a law in the future, we would be able to adjust chapter three so that that would not be possible. And a liquor license would not be available, they would double each other. Right, the pre-existing.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We'd have to, we'd have to change our orders to make that happen.
That's true.
Because right now, if you have a 250-foot buffer around the marijuana place and somebody opened up a restaurant and wanted to get a liquor license.
The reason that, the reason that this is different is because liquor licenses, both at the state and local level, have a one-year life. They must be renewed annually. And so as the laws change, that license every year becomes subject to the new regulations. At this point in time, we have no indication that the licenses for marijuana dispensaries will be similar. And so we have to make the assumption now that once that license is issued, that it will be in place for as long as that business is operating awfully. And that being the case, that's why it would be important to regulate it in this fashion now, understanding that liquor licenses are much more subject to regulation because they come up annually. Section three dash thirty of your code. And we don't know if, we don't know if medical marijuana can be renewed annually. We don't know that yet.
That's one of the things that you should tell us.
100 feet, we did it, it's one hundred. With the information and knowledge that we have right now, the only advice that we can give to you is you have to make your decision on the basis that once that license is issued, it may be there.
I guess I've got no problem agreeing with mine about the packaged sales piece of it. The rest I would like to stay intact.
So you're saying stay intact is a 100-foot buffer or stay intact is a 100-foot buffer?
A hundred.
Okay. The newly proposed version?
The newly proposed, the newly proposed version of just taking out the.
The package, package sales piece.
Correct.
Maybe it's because they just spent a week in Nevada. I don't, I don't really think personally that I have an issue with liquor by the, how do you say it? By the drink, I don't have an issue with that either, though. So I know you're saying you'd like to keep that in there. I would like to see it removed.
Well, I was kind of all in the same one, but I don't know what to say because usually your bars are around the residential area anyway. So whether it's a bar or some package. I don't think, I mean, I don't think a housing addition is going to come next door to a bar. I guess it's all the same.
We have it on the south side with, you know, Crossside Cricket.
But that would still reinstate the restriction from residential. I think would be, right, that portion would still be, have a buffer.
I think the concern is about safety. They're talking about liquor by the drink and they don't want marijuana right next to alcohol in close proximity, knowing that two forms of impairment can make. Rich's job and friends over there, and the owner's job a little bit more challenging in the absence of knowing what the future might hold, knowing that this could be a long-term decision. I would err on the side of caution, knowing that we could remove barriers as the laws unfold from the state. But I think we should be cautious in that regard. I'm okay with removing the packaged liquor sales, but I would like to see the by-the-drink stay, even if we remove it later on, once we know more.
So at this stage, we would need a motion to amend the ordinance to include whatever provisions the council. If we move forward, if the removal of the packaged sales buffer is the desire of one or more members of the council, that would be a motion to amend the ordinance according to the new proposal minus the provision on packaged sales.
So I'll make a motion to amend the current ordinance.
That's right, that's the ordinance that's moving.
To amend the current ordinance to remove packaged sales from the ordinance.
And all right, the motion would be to amend the bill according to staff's new proposal minus the provision on packaged sales. So it's like all of the new revisions that have been proposed by staff, except for the package sale. Why he said so.
So our proposal would still have them in the current first. Setback language in there regarding residential zone areas, public parks, and it would still include the 250 feet stuff of liquor by the drink.
Correct.
Just clarifying so everyone's following along.
Jacob?
Yes.
Oh, this is to amend.
This is for amendment, this is just a procedural motion to amend the bill.
Jacobson, yes. Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
No.
Johnston?
No.
So the bill has been amended, it was still before you on second reading.
We'll need another vote to approve it and make it city code.
So what we do?
I make a motion.
That's what I'm saying, I make a motion to approve.
With that new amendment.
This is for adoption rejection. Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
No.
Johnston?
No. All right. Next, that's the right spot here. It says first and second reading, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land 8.100 in an L.I. light industrial district located at 1095 South Mitchell Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Move that ordinance to second reading by time.
Jacob? Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use 8.100 in an L.I. light industrial district located at 1095 South Mitchell Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption rejection. Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Go.
Here we have an ordinance enlarging an R3 low-density multifamily residence district of rezoning land located at 615 Lea New Drive from G.T., general business district, to R3 low-density multifamily residence district.
Staff recommends approval to have the answering questions.
I'm going to move to second reading by time.
Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Yes.
This is an ordinance enlarging an R-three low-density multifamily residence district of rezoning land located at six fifteen Lakeview Drive from GB General Business District to R-three low-density multifamily residence district. This is for adoption rejection. Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance amending ordinance five-four-seven-four concerning the adopted fiscal year nineteen annual budget for the general fund.
And mayor, members of the city council, uh, back in early summer of twenty eighteen, we began a fundraising campaign to replace our automatic electronic defibrillators, AEDs. Uh, thanks to the generosity of our community, we were able to raise seventeen thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and six cents. Uh, these funds were placed in the city's donation account until we've ordered the AEDs, and so to allow us to spend those funds, we have to put them in the budget. We would ask for your approval to put those in the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You have to.
Will this say the number of second reading by title?
Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
You're right.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance fifty-four-seven-four concerning the adopted fiscal year nineteen annual budget for the general fund. This is for adoption rejection. Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
What I was going to say, because I thought you were done, was we're going to have a coffee and donuts with our AED sponsors, so look for that coming up, we'll make sure I'll be answering by as well.
Thank you. All right, next, we have an ordinance amending ordinance five-four-seven-four concerning the adopted fiscal year nineteen annual budget for the general fund.
And mayor, members of the city council, in fiscal year eighteen, we received two thousand five hundred, two thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and two six cents in federal forfeiture funds. We didn't spend them last year. Um, they have to be spent and tracked for specific purposes, so we are asking to have them put into the FY nineteen budget so that we can pay for Power DMS. It's an electronic software system that will allow us to track all of our policies for our Kalia project that we're working on right now, the accreditation process. I'd be happy to answer any questions, we'd recommend approval.
I was just curious, how do you get forfeiture funds?
Uh, we have, uh, years ago, we had detectives assigned their task force, a federal task force, and that's where these funds are coming from. And then, last year, if you all remember, when you agreed to, uh, let us assign another one to a task force, so, um, he's with the ATF task force, and when they seize property as a result of their criminal endeavors, uh, we get a proceed from that. I'm going to stipulate based on how many hours your detective put in. Um, in case, um, we have one pending right now that, um, should bring some significant change. Sometimes these things take a while, like these forfeitures were back when Andy was in the task force, and it's been like, I think, probably ten, fifteen years ago, maybe. So, they take some time to come through, um, but they're not all that much, but it's, that's the benefit for us being in the task force, so costs us a little bit, we've got to pay the salary, they pay overtime, but then you get stuff like this coming back to you, and you can, uh, fund some things that you wouldn't normally be able to fund in your budget.
Your ordinance says that it's wanting to help pay for the Power DMS, what, what kind of balance would it look to be at?
It'll actually be a whole thing, will actually be, will be on the, the, I think it's about, uh, ten or fifteen bucks.
Fully funded?
Fully funded, yeah, yeah. I got, that wasn't an Andy deal, so, uh, normally it's four thousand dollars, you negotiate them down to twenty-seven hundred, so if you ever need a negotiator, that's the, that's the other call.
So, probably answer my own question, since we, it was okay to allocate the money where it was, since you didn't use it, council needs to, to direct you to do it.
Yeah, so it's in last year's budget, and we didn't spend it, so it just goes back into the big pot. And since it's, since there are funds that have to be tracked, uh, for our record-keeping, uh, we have to put them back in the budget for this year is the, I think, is that right, Manti? My plain English version of budget.
I'll keep the audit, exactly. They weren't going to prove in the budget to be spending like this. So, if we're going to spend the money on this, we come to, from the decision-making body, which is you, the council. So, by you taking this action, when we get audited, then we can demonstrate that you have authority from the council to spend the funds in this way.
We said, go ahead, pass this up a little bit, Alan. Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance fifty-four-seven-four concerning the adopted fiscal year nineteen annual budget for the general fund. This is for adoption rejection. Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
We have an ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg, Missouri, establishing a lodging tax of five percent and submitting to the voters the same pursuant to section six-seven-point-one-zero-zero-zero RSMO.
So, we've discussed this several times in conjunction with, uh, Lawrenceburg Convention of Visitors Bureau, um, staff has prepared it as, and directed by the WCPB board. Uh, the WCPB did meet this week, and, or actually last week, last Thursday, they had their meeting, and reviewed the language, and have recommended in the council that this be approved and put on the ballot for April. So, in order for that to go on the ballot, council needs to vote to approve for that to go on the ballot, so that's what's before the WCPB. This would propose an increase, our, our current, um, lodging tax is at two-nine percent, so this would bring it to the voters, if they would like to see that raised to five percent, yeah, with the funds continuing to go to the WCPB for purposes of, of increasing the tourism to our community and supporting, uh, them and their efforts.
It's, I think, important to note for information dissemination that, uh, this, although it is an increase in tax, it's an increase in tax that will be paid by people that read one of our hotels, not on the residence of Lawrenceburg necessarily.
Yeah, I was at Fort Worth last week, I don't know what we're paying. Lots of taxes. I'm more live on. For Christmas, I stayed in Kansas City on the Missouri side, and, uh, I think I paid eighteen percent.
Yeah, I was shocked to see that number was that low. I thought our number was higher than that. I was very surprised.
Five percent is the maximum we can assess, and it can be our size by state law, but it requires voter approval. So, ultimately, the voters are hundred-fifty, say what happens, but council member Watts is correct. Typically, this isn't paid by our local residents, this is paid by people that come to our community. And this revenue is generated back to help encourage and provide ways and means that these people continue to be interested in our community.
And it's raising it from one of the lowest in the state to not, not the highest, but back to the middle of the pack.
Will this be passed the second reading by title?
Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is the city of Lawrenceburg, Missouri, establishing the lodging tax of five percent and submitting to the voters the same pursuant to section sixty-seven-point-one-zero-zero-zero RSMO. This is for adoption rejection. Jacob?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, under other business, we have the preliminary plat of Hunter Hollow Third Plat.
This is out on West Gay Street, and if, um, do you recall, within the last year, we rezoned a piece of land, so the developer originally, um, had what's called Hunter Hollow Second Plat, and on the end was the seventh lot, and it was kind of L-shaped, and it wrapped back around to the north behind the other six lots. And he purchased the land to the east of it, and that is what he was before you last, uh, rezoning that into the R-two district. And now, he's taken that L-shaped lot and the new land he's purchased and submitted this preliminary plat, Hunter Hollow Third Plat, contains seven-point-three-one acres, it's on the north side of West Gay Street, and this plat would, uh, create six new buildable lots, um, and then, uh, one undevelopable tract in the back. And notes have been added to the plat to say that since there is no frontage on the city street, that is a undevelopable lot, and no building permits would be issued for it. There are significant grade issues with that lot, uh, and drainage issues, so it is, would be very challenging to build upon. So, staff has recommended approval of the preliminary plat with, I believe there are six, six conditions, um, that do need to be addressed and revised and resubmitted to staff. So, preliminary plats are not recorded, they come before this body, uh, and so there's no resolution, no ordinance with them, you, you just do a voice vote. So, staff would recommend approval with those conditions, submitted in the staff report under the applicant, Mr. Coulson's here this evening, if you have any questions for him or staff that you have to answer.
So, he just, looks like he's just built and, he just done, uh, West Gay Street. All the stuff behind this one, or that one?
Yeah, it's just, uh, one tier of lots with, all with frontage on Gay Street, and all of the sites that they could, uh, support Bay duplex.
Okay. So, we still have that, we still have great decent tree separation there between the park and the houses?
All the tract, uh, will separate the house from the park. And I can't, they can keep the trees, but it's a lot of land.
You'll keep them, right? Yeah.
Jacob?
Watts?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have the Pearl Springs Streetcar Discussion.
So, remember a couple of council meetings ago, we had, uh, a presentation and a concept regarding, uh, Pearl Springs, uh, Streetcar Discussion, this was an effort advising people to restore the old historical streetcar that went between downtown and, um, Pearl Springs, uh, back when that was a big tourist destination. Previous council, uh, staff had signed a resolution of support, uh, in regards to that, uh, the gentleman came back, and we're requesting that, uh, that be reaffirmed, uh, including, uh, directing and operating the staff that participate in any, uh, consortium, uh, to discuss those types of things. I guess at the risk of, of being the bad guy, I would state that, uh, I have some significant concerns regarding this plat moving forward, uh, its impact on infrastructure, and its feasibility, uh, moving forward, and, um, my personal opinion is that this community and staff have higher priorities to deal with, such as Maguire Bridge, Maguire Court, and a lot of other things, versus spending our staff time and resources in, in discussing this issue and moving forward with this issue. I'm all about preserving history, I think there's other ways to more economically preserve this history going forward. I believe that the demand for this type of use is, uh, we don't have Pearl Springs anymore to draw tourists in. Uh, I think transportation has changed significantly from this standpoint, back when that streetcar was probably going, a lot of people didn't have cars or personal vehicles, so they relied on the train and these types of things to get them where they needed to go. Now, most households probably have two or three cars per household. So, um, again, uh, it's up to council, if council chooses that this is something that you would like for our community moving forward, staff will do its best to, to make it happen and make it successful, uh, but my recommendation is, we'd gladly decline at this time, and if they want to continue trying to work on it in the, in the private sector, if you're going, that's fine, but I don't want to see the eye of the staff continuing to participate in this conversation.
And I, I guess what I gathered from the last meeting is, I mean, they're talking about putting train tracks in the infrastructure, kind of what I gathered, that what we have gathered from that conversation, and I don't necessarily have any interest in cutting up any road, put train tracks in there, you know?
You're also talking about some significant roads, I see a lot of traffic in our community, Calm Street being one, so I'm putting them over that bridge over the railroad, one, you're going to have to get approval from the railroad, which I think is, snowballs chance of happening, and two, is the impact it would have to the university as well.
Trolley car, I'll, we hope not to get into the conversation, but as far as a train track system.
I think my reserve was, it's a cool concept, but once it's there, then it's the cities, they've got to maintain the road, they've got to maintain, and then the funding, you know what I mean, is gone. So, then now we're putting another burden on the city to maintain those roads from here to there.
Well, I asked a question during the last meeting, it was, as a part of the engineering, was there a maintainability piece? Uh, and the answer was it hadn't been included. I think the lifecycle cost of a project like that, if you look out ten, fifteen years, would be pretty expensive for the city. So, I, I guess I would hope not to, not to, uh, support the resolution right now.
The two gentlemen aren't here, they turned out a long way. Um, if you want to hear their thoughts or opinions, but, um, again, that's, that's staff's recommendation at this point.
I feel like you gave a great presentation last time, I actually learned some good history. Uh, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing something symbolic, like a trolley car kind of thing, you know, that happened in Key West and Herman, Missouri, and stuff like that, and those are pretty neat, um, kind of the symbolic representation of that, that maybe didn't affect the infrastructure quite as much.
And that could be a private effort.
Right.
Um, that you guys could, could undergo, it's just I don't see the feasibility of, you know, ten, eight dollars. If we were given that, I think we would spend it on other things, uh, that would be beneficial for the entire city, so just from a feasibility standpoint, I'm, I don't have any regrets.
I could make a couple remarks, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I, my hearing's not very good, so I, I've kind of struggled a little bit to hear what you're saying, but, um, and we certainly understand your concerns, and maybe we haven't made it clear that, that we've tried to address those in advance, um, and understand what those concerns might be, as far as, uh, the maintenance of the rails, some things that happen in the future, uh, and we also haven't looked at this just as a public transportation project, but as an economic development, uh, project as well, which, uh, and we've had some very good productive discussions with the university and with the county as well, uh, which is why we were asking, uh, for the city, once again, to, as we said, reaffirm your resolution of support, but, uh, just add it as a coalition with the, uh, county and the university, uh, in order for us to maybe move forward to state funding, uh, for the completion of project. We do understand your concerns, and I just, um, again, we see it as a very positive thing for the city, for the university, and for the county, and we see it as a draw, uh, to recruit students, faculty for the university, we see it as a good generator for business in the downtown area, and, um, and again, we're really not asking for anything from the city other than, uh, just, hey, we'd really like to see this happen, uh, and lend your, uh, moral support to it, as we see, uh, funding, both from private sources, uh, and from, uh, grants as well, uh, and, and we think that that support that, that we can get both from this coalition, the city, the university, and the county would, uh, be very beneficial to us, uh, and lend credibility to the project as, as we seek that outside support. We would have not been able to move forward with any type of engineering or plans or those things that would not fit into the plans of the city and long-term concerns that you have about, uh, maintenance going forward and all those sort of things. I mean, we know it has to work for everybody, and, uh, and that absolutely is, is part of our concern too, and we would hope to work with everybody on city staff, with this progress, as it would move forward, to make sure that it meets everybody's requirements and needs. And we did have a, a feasibility study done, uh, by Trans Systems out of Kansas City, who has actually a worldwide reputation developing these kinds of projects, and they were very positive about the feasibility of the project, and as they said, the biggest obstacle is raising the money to do it, but as far as the actual implementation of the project, But as far as the actual implementation of the project, the physical limitations, the rideaways, all of those things, that they really saw no real barriers to it, other than simply raising the money that that we need to make.
And one last thing to emphasize, and I'm Tim Bryant, this is my brother Bob, we're doing a little jammer, that that we're not now, we anticipate never seeking any direct funding from the city at all, what we're just looking for is your kind of affirmation of what the previous council did in 2015, of, you know, we think it's a good idea and this is our sentiment for you guys and you mean us, to go forward and try to to get private money and grants to see this project and we build. And again, nothing that would, the infrastructure, that sure, this is a significant infrastructure project, but where it might be street running, streetcars, to make sure that's all compatible with traffic and and maintenance and there'd be, you know, all the procedures that that the council and the city and and the builders and the city and the university would would see to get this project done, whether it was on city streets or or other, other driveway particularly through the campus or out through with the old historic streetcar group out of Pearl Springs. And again, this is not a steam powered train that was that operated here many decades ago, this would be battery powered with no overhead wiring, just the single line track in the streets and a kind of quiet replica style, small locomotive, I'm going to. And again, I said, we're not looking to obligate the city for anything and we absolutely are open to complete cooperation with and coordination with cities, the project would move forward so we make sure everybody's concerns are answered before they attend the problem.
Thank you for the additional information.
All right, thank you.
As much as I do love the concept, I have to go back to my word, to spend that much
time with the city and itself, I'm just not in favor of it. I think going down the street with a car that's not taking our money away from us with this rail, twenty years from now, we're gonna have this rail, either we're gonna have to cover it up and do it, or still maintain it. And I just don't think it's the right concept for one third right now. Sorry.
Well, again, we're not asking for the city to maintain it as well, it would be, through the streetcar project would be the the maintenance cost.
Right, and once it's, once you get ten million and then we build it, then, I don't know if I'll still be around, but then the the next staff or city council or whatever or the city residents are gonna have to keep it maintained. It's not just gonna be a two, two-year thing and then it's gone. This is a huge project that I'm not in favor of due to our streets as much as we've spent on our streets now, between now and here in Pearl, I think that I'm gonna decline.
Let me take that.
I would, yeah, look to do both, other than we have direct staff.
I would make the motion to decline on this resolution.
The voting yes with decline.
That's right.
Confirming, yes, I understand the motion.
Okay, so Ron made that motion, okay. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Right, next we have the Holden Street bike lane discussion. You don't look like Slim.
We have a mayor, a council member, so you're aware of, and a few of you are aware of, Mark Banner had approached us on behalf of Murdoch Banner Financial Group, and we built the downtown revitalization Phase Four project. And obviously regarding, I believe that we may lost the parking in front of their, their group. And we described to them why the parking went away based on the realignment of the street, because we had to widen Holden Street in the process of doing that. Then we also obviously installed bike lanes on both east and west side, which obviously removed the parking. We then staffed that with the Murdoch group on January, I'm sorry, December eleventh. And the bottom line is that they basically requested staff at that point to what would be the process of possibly reinstating that work. We went over it with engineering, we've done measurements, we've, and based on the realignment of the street during the design and the construction. It's not feasible to put parking lots, parking stalls back, it would impede the parking or the drivelines, which are now twelve foot wide, to match the existing downtown area. And then one of the, one of the questions was brought up about, well, why is it able to do it down here with parking? And that was answered by, well, we have bump outs down here. And you can ask Mr. Coleman, who just spent nine and a half hours in Boccat cleaning down the downtown with around the bump outs. So during the design process of this project, we determined to take bump outs out as they went up the hill, which was more maintenance free. By reinstating those parking lanes, it would then impede the twelve foot driveline, and it wouldn't be safe. But what staff did do was we, we did measure from the existing parking, it's still here, there's one parking stall and then a eighty-eight parking stall, we can install one parking stall in front of that. We would have to basically grind the paint for the bike lane and then repaint it. But beyond that, then you're gonna, then you're going to impede into the driveline, the twelve foot driveline that was designed. The staff is asking for guidance as reference to whether or not to reinstall at least one parking stall or make no changes based on the design. And the cost was there at about five hundred dollars to grind it out and then repaint it.
Many of them are not bannered, appear in the audience this evening to hear their concerns. But I think we had productive conversation, council member Lund and Watts joined us, staff, and when we had the report back from the engineer, so they can speak well to this issue as well.
After the Phase Four project was completed, we received some feedback within the first week from Murdoch Banner stating that they had received multiple complaints of a lot of their clientele was not able to park in their normal spot along the street and it was a little more challenging to get into their business. With no off-street parking, it really put a damper on their business and they asked us to reconsider reinstating the parking spots. We have met to listen to their concerns, as well as to visit with staff to understand what the the options are, engineering was involved, and as stated, all of the parking spots cannot be added back due to the the realignment and and the width of the street. However, some of those could. And so when we had that conversation, we didn't obligate the city for anything, we just basically received feedback from Murdoch and Banner folks. And so we're bringing that back to council now for consideration to, do we keep the bike lane as it is, or do we go ahead and try to add back the one spot that is feasible at this time without tearing out everything? Minimal cost of five hundred dollars. My opinion is that we can listen to, you know, it was an unintended consequence of the progress that we made and and making things visually visually appealing, but losing some of that parking adds a huge burden on the business. I think it's in the, in the best interest of the council to appease them, but to add one parking spot back as we can, every little bit would help to get some folks in there and also put in writing that there is the availability to drop off and pick up in that area, even though it is a bike lane, they could drop off and pick up to help some folks get inside easier. So it's my opinion that we should do what we can to help the the local business that's been here for forty years?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. That we can accommodate their request to the the amount that was recommended by the engineers. And so, Bob, you have any?
I would just echo what what Casey just said, you know, this, the business has been there a long time and they're valued, a valued business to the city. I think we need to reinstate as much parking as possible. And I think that we should also point out that the city manager is taking the, taking the step to open up the parking now on this side of the council chambers so that those that, those customers that you have that aren't as old as I am can park where they're to walk up. But I understand that that a lot of your, a lot of your clientele needs to be close, so the drop-off idea is is a good one.
As much as I should ride a bike more by then giving up one spot for our community, they've been there for so long, give up that one spot and go around, I guess, if you're riding the bike.
I agree with that, I love bike lanes, but that's pretty challenging to do business without at least a parking spot, so.
Just need the motions.
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
All right, since we already moved number ten, we have the mayoral equipment. I would like to appoint Mason Wurzing to the WCV.
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
I thought you did. Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Since we have Ms. Lady Satters, Mayor Amber, City Council. Got the city manager report?
Things have been pretty quiet the last few weeks with the holidays and staff taking time off to be with family and those types of things, but there's been some rearrangements in city hall, the remodel has been done. And if you recall, in the budget process, we did approve for a new HR technician position to help us with our HR load, they come up with some office space and where they could actually work. And so we did a remodel and actually my office has moved and we're shuffling some people around, but that's, the remodel is complete, my office is moved and some of the other offices are in process of moving as well, so feel free to stop by sometime and check out the the new fresh look. Also, last week, council member Jacobs and I went down to Fort Worth and attended the International Council of Shopping Centers Deal Making Conference for the Red River States, which the translate is it's an Oklahoma-Texas economic development conference, and one we attended in Chicago. We have a lot of developers and retailers come in, they're connecting with communities, kind of opting for us to exchange data and information, give our sales pitch to these businesses and why they should show interest in our community. I thought it went well. This was the the first year that they kind of revamped this conference, it used to be in Dallas, it was a Texas, pretty much a Texas only conference. This is the first year that they relocated it to Fort Worth and they changed the time of year that it was occurring. And so I, I wanted to quite make sure what the demands would be at the time, so I appreciate council member Jacobs coming down with me. I think in the future, we can probably staff it with one, I thought there was a need for two of us to go down, although I did appreciate council member Jacobs' help with his mechanical ability, he had a problem with one of our banners and he got it to work, he was much more persistent with it than I was. But anyway, I think it was a good conference, I think that we had some good leadership and talked to some businesses that I have not seen in either Chicago or Las Vegas when we've gone to these conferences, and we'll be following up with them in partnership with Retail Coach. And anyway, I thought it was good. The drive back was more harrowing after about seven years, and we made it in safely, but I would encourage the council to continue the budget. I think there was a lot better retail presence and discussion than there was even in Chicago. I think there's a lot of us continuing to go to Chicago, but I think we need to be consistent in this one as well, we're the only community from Missouri there with a booth present, and it was noticed and appreciated. So anyway, again, I think it was a good conversation and it was a worthwhile trip. Other than that, I don't, one more thing, and I just want to say publicly my thanks and gratitude to our public work staff who always does a great job comparing our roads with snow. It was a pretty stark difference for me Friday night coming home to what quality our roads were already at, at one thirty in the morning, I think it was a Friday and we were a Saturday morning. But then compared to Rose and I, just spent several hours driving on it and how quickly Saturday and over the weekend that our roads were clean and clear and very safety drive. And so, I know our staff doesn't want to work on that and a lot of times they don't get a lot of thank you, they get a lot of complaints a lot of times that we plow road in, or we plow snow into people's driveways and those types of things and we take down the mailbox, but overall, our staff does an excellent job in maintaining our roads in these types of events. And just, just my thanks to them for the job they do. We did sustain significant tree damage in our public trees downtown specifically, so we'll be doing an assessment of how many of those can remain or may be removed in the spring, so we'll update you on that in the future as well. I don't have anything else.
And last weekend was just a practice round, right?
Yeah, we got more time this weekend.
Don't say that.
Oh, there's a very heavy, hot snow.
Very heavy.
Matthew?
We had a slight downtime in revenue this month, but I think a lot of it still has still the reporting that's coming from the state and the timing of the money that has been returned to us, so I think it'll take maybe another year to put this whole thing to kind of shake out and we can start getting some consistent.
I have nothing additional.
I've got a question on the building permits I saw. Where is, let me find it before we get by there. The number and and the dollar amounts. There were eight hundred and twenty-six, I think, building from this issue.
In twenty eighteen?
In twenty eighteen.
Calendar year, yeah.
And then?
Calendar year twenty seventeen was four hundred forty-six.
Yeah, so we're.
The vast majority of those were rerops.
Okay, okay, so that accounts for the?
That includes all your additional rerops from Hail damage this summer.
Okay, but that accounts for the, for the disparity in the total figures as well.
The construction value?
I'd say it would.
Well, not too many dollars, no. Your, your rerops minus that is twenty thousand. The construction valuation usually is more highly impacted by, and I couldn't tell you without looking at who your big ones were, I feel like the ambulance district is probably expensive construction.
Some of that came also from the apartments down the?
That would have hit in a different year.
Was it, okay.
I'm wondering if Hamiltonian hit last year and I'm wondering if Human Recovery Facility on Fort Worth Road, I, I think probably Human Recovery Facility and the ambulance district are the two that are.
That would account for that.
Would account for that, most of that two million, but I, I guess, I mean, then each of those is one permit.
Well, I just saw the big difference in the numbers of permits and the roofing, you would account for that.
The number is attributed to roofing, the roofing I couldn't attribute it to the construction valuation, that's just not that expensive.
Marcy?
I'm the mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for this opportunity to go before the voters in April. We appreciate your support and we will, we will do an effective job of educating our community of what CVB does, what the lodging tax is used for currently and what we plan for in the future. With that strategic plan, we have been working on, the board has been working on a strategic plan since October. It was approved for implementation at Thursday, last Thursday's meeting. So I will provide that in your next meeting of council packets. So you'll see where, where our mission is and what our goals and objectives are that we have identified. Currently, we are just working with all the different organizations that are hosting events in our area for 2019 to see what we can do to support them. We learned a lot last year and I know that we'll learn more this year to make sure that we provide a positive experience for those that are visiting our community. Thank you.
Yeah, one thing, I was hoping that we have a young intern who's also a soldier at the White Men Air Force Base. Is helping out in the human resources area for the next six months through the career skills training program from the base. He'll be working with us 24 hours a week for the next six months or so, which as you heard Harold talk about the rearrangement, that's to also get some space for him to be able to work in. But it's a, it's a really neat program. And I think, you know, as more business in the community finds out about the training program before they transition out of the military and get into a career in the workforce. So not only do we get to take advantage of his skills and coming to help us, but we're going to provide him some, some training into a field that he wants to go into in the future. So he couldn't be here tonight, but he's going to be here at the next council meeting. So I'll be able to introduce him to you. But if you're around City Hall, you'll see that his name is Joel Doppola, originally from Philly. So he's disappointed in his Eagles loss this weekend, but other than that, he's been doing great job.
Agreed.
Another man that program is up in the Air Force actually pays for his wages. So we get it back 24 hours pretty much free, same as budgetarily.
Our program used to be called Project Transition. You're still eight years in.
Well, so far we've had 54 calls since the beginning of the storm, been a busy weekend. Saturday they did 24, or 25 calls in a 24 hour period. We had one house fire that was caused from the electricity coming back on and there was damage to the electrical house. The house can be rebuilt, it's got some significant interior damage, but it can be okay. Also, we've lost a few people this, for this first year. We had two retirements and one resignation, our training officer retired. His wife died at the city's end, so he's going to be all in the RRC backache. He leaves the second of February. We had a firefighter, a senior firefighter, a lead worker. He was here for 10 years and received an offer that, as he said, I didn't think I'd ever get in my life. So he's gone away. And then our inspector investigator, Dr. Boom, he's leaving this Friday to, his wife moved to, or got a job elsewhere. And he had an offer also that was, so he left early, he wasn't originally leaving in February. So right now we're down three so far. And we're working on getting those replaced. Other than that, it's a rich show.
Oh, wow. I'm out of follow-up. I'm not losing anybody except for my dog. The most popular, my department, I just want to give you an update on Gunner. He's doing a little bit better, he's off the muscle relaxers and they're trying to dial back the prednisone. We're still seeing the chiropractor down in Clinton. He's having some eye trouble with his lower back. They're kind of getting weird out of him. He'll be nine this upcoming spring, so you know, that's about where they start life cycling out. And like all of us, as we get older, your health is kind of on a razor thin edge. So he's doing better. We're probably going to limit his work as far as patrol work, bike work, that kind of stuff. And just do mostly narcotics work with him. And we will, as you've probably already seen, it will see more coming up. We're going to start the fundraising process for replacement. We're optimistic that we should be able to reach our goal. We're looking for about $20,000 to get his replacement. That includes the dog, the training, all the equipment. And we've already had one group step forward, the Early Bird Rotary, not, yeah, Early Bird Rotary, that means it, in the evening. They are making us their major benefactor for the Taste of Johnson hat, so we're super excited about that. And so that will go a long way towards getting started with our fundraising. That's all I have on Gunner. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a downtown business owner, I just want to take the opportunity to say how much we appreciated the efforts and effort of works. As somebody who had an peril haunting this morning, it was exciting to hear the chainsaws come and take care of some things that could have been a substantial problem, especially with more snow on the way. And just by way of comparison, I'll tell you that a colleague of mine, who works as county council in Boone County, was unable to meet his driveway this morning because his residential streets had not been touched. So I think Warrensburg stands among the best in the state in public worst performance in these situations.
And I echo the same thing. I did some, I did some defending work for you guys on Facebook. Probably didn't do it any good, but it was at least an attempt.
I'm trying to avoid that.
But I will say that, I mean, I left my house at 3:30 because I had no power. So I left the house at 3:30 to go watch the Chiefs game and the roads were beautiful, clear. The best, I hate the fact that we lost those trees going down Holden, but that was a very beautiful sight if you look down Holden at the time and seen all the trees the way they look, it was, you know, unfortunately we'll lose a bunch of them, but it was beautiful. When we were over in Dallas, I think one thing that we discovered that I think we want to need to get with UCM and see if we can do, figure out something is, it was amazing. We probably had 20, 30 people come to our booth, who had graduated from UCM or was married to somebody who had graduated from UCM. So I, I think we, I think we need to figure out how to work with UCM to, to bring that connection back to Warrensburg and try to bring some of those people back to Warrensburg that, in that manner also. Because it's very obvious, UCM graduates a lot of people and then they leave Warrensburg and we never see them again until, you know, some of them come back as senior citizens, but we don't ever really see them, you know. But, that is it. Thank you everybody for coming to the table.
Yeah, thank you for your participation tonight. We did, just have one last thing, we have four candidates right now running for city council for the next go around. We've got Nolan Brooks, Justin Johnson, Tarrell Bentley, and Scott Hope. I think three, then the other one's at home with kids.
Oh, okay.
And you said tomorrow, what do you plan on?
Tomorrow is the last day to file, so by the time tomorrow, my office, do you like to come to the file?
Let me know if you guys invite, please.
All right, thank you.